Okay, I'd like to thank you everybody for coming out tonight and braving the cold weather to attend East Dundee's regular meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Monday, February 17th, 2025. I have 602. Catherine, will you take the role?
Trustee Mahoney, here. Trustee Coonsy, here. Trustee Britton, here. Trustee Saviano, here. Trustee Tribber, here. Trustee Sodder, here. And President Lino.
Here. And if you'll rise for me to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. It's going to take us to our public comments section. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item? Sir?
I was just hoping that we could move up an item.
Could you give us your name and number, just for record?
What's that?
Your name and number.
Oh, yeah. My name is A.J. Singh.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We were just hoping that we can move up one of the agenda items for the restaurateurs that wanted to discuss open carry. And we were hoping that we could maybe get that to the ahead of the agenda, just because it might be a long night tonight.
That's item F in items?
Right. Yeah, we don't have any problem with that. I can't imagine. So we've got, in fact, two or three discussion items on tonight's agenda. So it's going to be a long one. So if you all bear with us, we'll try and condate that. All righty. Was anybody else interested in addressing the board? No, seen none? Okay. And we have some announcements here. And Chief, I'm going to let you have the floor here.
Hello. First, I'm going to introduce two new officers to the police department, and then I'll give it over to Catherine to do their ceremonial swearing in. The first is Angel Chades. Angel, I'm very pleased to welcome Angel Chades to our team as the new full-time police officer. He started with the department on July 15th, 2024. He was the first of four new hires to the East Dundee Police Department in 2024. Angel comes to us with prior law enforcement experience from the Illinois State University's Police Department. He's very enthusiastic about this new opportunity with the village, and he plans to bring his skill set to meet the needs of our community. I will say that Angel is out of his field training period and is on his own right now, and has been doing a great job for us. Secondarily, George Moretti. I'm also delighted to introduce George as a full-time police officer to our department. While George is new to law enforcement, his enthusiasm and dedication to joining our team have more than made up for his limited experience. I just want to plug George real quick. During the lead-up to joining our department, I felt like he wanted to be here just about every day to do a ride-along. At one point, we had to say, George, time has come. But we appreciated the enthusiasm. So George graduated from the police academy on December 13th. He's currently infiltrating with the goal to be a solo patrol next month. Do you want to do the swearing-ins now or after? No, okay. Sorry.
It's up to you guys.
All right. I'm going to move on to recognizing. Is Brian here yet? No? I don't think he's here yet.
Maybe we do the swearing-ins first, then.
Maybe we should do those first.
Police officer.
Come on in, sir. So this year, in 2024, we brought back the Officer of the Year Award for the Police Department. I think it's an important reward because it recognizes individuals for doing good work. And I think sometimes too often in our career, we can be criticized for doing a bad job, but this recognizes Brian for doing a great job. Brian joined us as a lateral police officer from the Lake Moore Police Department. He actually started part-time back in 2021. In 2023, he was accepted as a full-time lateral from Lake Moore Police Department. When he started here part-time, he brought with him some skills in the evidence retention department, specifically evidence inventorying in our evidence room. He did a really good job of cleaning up the room and making sure it was very organized, and which, as you guys can probably understand, it's very important when, if we get subpoenaed for a particular case, we've got to be able to find that particular piece of evidence and get it to the court, to the defense attorneys, whatnot. And Brian does a really good job of that. He also brought a lot of other skills with him. While I, he also, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but we are bringing back our detective position in 2025. Brian was additionally selected to be our detective. When George is up on his own, Brian should fall into that role here really soon for us. So we're excited for that. So without further ado, I want to recognize our Officer of the Year, 2024, Brian Maculatus.
Congratulations.
Can we give another picture of you two of the podium?
Yeah, thanks.
We need to see the sign more.
Appreciate it. We got to put this in the newsletter. All right, big deal. Thank you.
And then we'll bring Angel up.
Hi, Angel Chades.
Hi, Angel Chades.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the Village.
And the ordinances of the Village.
Of East Dundee.
Of East Dundee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Village of East Dundee.
For the Village of East Dundee.
To the best my ability.
To the best my ability.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Chief, did you say Angel is part of the University of Illinois Police Force?
Illinois State.
Illinois State, okay. And you won't have any trouble in East Dundee. So you've seen that. So, okay. That's going to take us into our consent agenda. I've been told that item E is going to require a five out of seven vote. So if anybody has any questions about that, that you may not approve this one, say so now, because then we can pull it and vote on it separately. But if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to, before we do that, there are a couple of changes to the meeting minutes. Should I say those now, or should we discuss them separately?
We could always pull that one if you want, and pull item A, so we can go items B through J if you'd like.
Just a couple of simple typos in the meeting minutes, so.
Okay, if you want to, if they're just that.
Okay.
Make the changes now, and we can read them in.
There is, in the meeting minutes, there is a reference to Binshore, and it is Binshore, the builder for, under discussion on page two at the top, fifth line in. Need to correct the name of the company for Hager. And then also on the board reports for Tribber, it is not the Police Dome, it is the Polar Dome.
Great catch, great catch. Were those the only corrections?
Those were the only two I caught.
Okay.
I'd also like to remove item D from the consent agenda. I have a few questions on that.
Okay.
Did you make a motion for the consent agenda?
No.
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda items A through C and F through J on the agenda.
Kelly, do we need them written, read in?
And the, oh, okay. So it'd be, okay.
It would be just the items that you did not call.
B through, B and C, and then E through J. Right?
Second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
Well, I do have a question for Phil on the Streets program. It seems like we're doing less linear, and just in terms of linear mileage, less than we have been doing the last few years. Is that just because the Second Street project is, the sculpt with the Second Street project is pretty significant, that it's taken up the budget?
Yeah, it's more of a reconstruct compared to resurfacing previous years. This involves all curb and gutter replacement.
Right.
All surface replacement as well as.
Okay.
I think it's screwed.
All right, good.
So it's, Catherine, you want?
Yeah, yeah. And much needed, too. So, good. I'm glad that's getting done. All right.
My other question on that same topic was, in these areas, we have all also confirmed that there is no lead line replacement needed on these streets that are being resurfaced?
We will be replacing lead services, any and all lead services ahead of these road improvement projects this year.
Okay.
Street improvement project there.
Okay, so that's all happening before that?
Yes.
Great.
Fantastic.
Okay. Anything else? No? Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney? Yes. Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes. Okay, and then item D.
And then I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving a master license agreement with Metro FiberNet LLC. Second.
Second.
Okay, my question on this was, it sounds like this is a new service coming in, which is awesome to have all the fiber underground, and that residents have the option to partake of the internet service only. They don't offer cable. Do we have an idea of how competitive they are with the other rates of Comcast or other for residential use?
I can only speak from personal experience. Is that, yes, they are competitive, having used Metronet in the past. Ben Ruzik?
Oh, hi.
Ruzik is here from Metronet, and perhaps, Ben, you can address the board with perhaps that question if you could please.
Yeah. Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Great.
As far as competitiveness goes, Metronet is right with everybody else, if not lower, in a lot of cases, especially when we come into town where there hasn't been another pure fiber play in the market. We typically will help them adjust their pricing accordingly. And so it's good. It's great competition, helps everybody out within that. But when we look at our pricing, when we typically come into a market, we're less than the majority, which is nice.
And then for, I would imagine you're like managing the mains throughout the Village right-of-ways. And then if homeowners or residents or businesses wanted to connect, is that connection from the main to the house or the box, the responsibility of the resident then? Or how does that work?
Yep, so that's exactly right. We'll be doing what we call a city build, so bringing the main lines throughout town. And then at that point, residents and businesses will be able to call us, let us know that they would like to take service, and then we'll come out and complete the installation for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does Metronet rent their lines, the conduit, from P T and T?
We are not. So everything that Metronet does will all be its own. That way, if there are cuts and issues, things like that, we're able to maintain it.
It'll be on you guys to put it in?
Yes, absolutely, yes, sir.
All right. Great. Anything else? No? Okay. Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes. Okay, that'll take us to the meat of the agenda tonight. We have two different, three actually, I'm sorry, discussion items, one of which we've been requested to push to the top of the line. Does anybody have any objection to doing that? Okay, then, do we need a motion to move that discussion item? So this will be a discussion of potential changes to the Village events at the depot. So A.J., would you like to take the floor and give us, I mean, are you speaking for the group, or? No? Okay. Well, if anybody would?
Could I, could I make a statement on behalf of the Events Committee before we move forward?
Okay.
So there is a bit of difference in the previous Events Committee meeting versus what is shown in the packet here. The result of the last Events Committee meeting was that we were going to start investigating ways to shut down. Both of the streets allow numerous businesses to participate in all of the events or any of the events that they wanted to. And that is a separate issue from open carry. That is a separate issue from moving forward. I'm seeing head nods, so I'm really glad I'm remembering this correctly. That is a separate and distinct issue from the ongoing conversation that we are going to have on a larger scale with the Police Department, Public Works, and everybody like that, about open carry of alcohol in the future in the Village. So it is our plan to move forward this event season, or continue discussions this event season, to shutting down the streets, having different security measures, things like that, that will be going on for businesses, having a survey go out to discuss the potential change with the businesses who have been involved in the past, to make sure we've got buy-in from the majority. And then really, it will be, businesses will still have to kind of set up how they have in the past with either tents or tables or whatever. They'll be within the event, contained within the event. But we will be opening it up to more businesses, to any and all businesses who have participated. So did I get that right? Did I get that right?
Any and all in East Dundee?
Any and all in East Dundee, yes. That have participated in the past, as far as East Dundee businesses. We're just not confining it only to the ones on the square. So that's the, that is the difference between what's in the packet, we always discuss. There's a little bit of confusion. So just wanted to clarify.
Why are we, why are we doing that? Why are we opening it up to more? Like, previously, we gave the opportunity to specific vendors on a rotational basis, right? So why, what is the object of opening it up?
I think this is, I think this is a good time to talk to the businesses and have them speak on their behalf, because they came to us with this request.
Yeah, I will say that from my perspective on things, there are a handful of issues. It is a challenge to navigate who gets what, when, where, and how. There are certain businesses that will only participate on certain days. There are certain businesses that won't participate at all if they don't get to be on certain days. There are certain businesses that have issues with the way things work and don't want to do food, only want to do alcohol. So it is a very significant piece of effort to balance all of the needs of all the businesses in order to field this correctly. We faced long lines last year for beer and for food. And so I think with some reasonable guidelines, you know, maybe taking a look at price point or how much food everybody can bring in or things like that, I think that this could be a really cool opportunity to showcase all the businesses and give everybody the opportunity to participate.
And in addition to that, I think what was a compelling argument from the businesses or a statement position was that, you know, when the events are happening on Thursdays and Wednesdays, streets get shut down, there's a lot of, it makes it more difficult to, for the businesses directly on the square, within the entertainment zone. So the feeling is that they are losing business if they are also not participating in that particular event, on serving at the event or outside of their establishment on their sidewalk. So trying to balance that was one of the key, key reasons why we're entertaining this, looking at it and studying it with police, with fire department, with Phil, and because Public Works does all the setup. So did, is there anything else that you guys wanted to make a statement on regarding your desire for this change?
Yeah, I mean, you know, a couple things, as we talked and then met with you guys and Trish, as well as you two, and, you know, for us businesses specifically in the square, you've got to understand that right now, you have people bringing in coolers. They are already violating the law and the rules. So, you know, there's got to either be, hey, you have to have something where they are stopped from bringing those items in on those Wednesdays and Thursday Thursdays, because that directly impacts us. And, you know, when, you know, we're told, hey, our liquor can't go outside, but then we see beer we're not selling, now we're saying, well, how's that happening? So this is something that, you know, is really affecting us in that square. In addition to things that I've mentioned to you guys about, you know, positioning of whether it's tents or music or et cetera, you know, I remember, you know, you know, Joe saying, hey, put the music in front of me. You know, I have no problem with that. I'd say thank you, because it's always an inconvenience for us, and we do lose business because of it. And we have now two years of data that says, oh, you're always going to get more people into the community. That's not what happens on those days. You know, we think we're going to get more. Parking gets taken up. All these things happen. So what we're requesting is simply of the board to consider that we'd be able to sell in that square. It's easily, you know, with the right resources, we could potentially, you know, corner it off, not allowing people to bring stuff from outside. And then when they exit, they as well can be, make sure not to remove items. You know, our strong belief is that obviously it should be people in the square or in this downtown East Dundee area. But obviously, you know, there are views on that as well. But for us, as we're directly impacted by these events substantially, we think that, you know, there should be consideration for that. And then it should be kept down to the businesses in this central business culinary district, whatever name I think we could come up with would really help. But that's kind of what we're thinking. And, you know, I don't think I'm missing any points, am I?
And so one of the points that we had discussed is a point of compromise is obviously, you know, Rosies, Cobb's, like, as long as you can get yourself into the square, you can serve in the square during the events. And that's part of what we discussed. Some of the things that A.J. did bring up, as far as the security and the coolers and things like that, the committee is still talking through. We have our, one of our next committee meetings as soon as Catherine's able to get schedules organized. We're going to be speaking with Chief and Phil during those meetings to tackle some of the, you know, low hanging fruit. You can't bring in coolers. There's already a no outside alcohol policy, but you watch people bring in, like, full cases of beer. So it's a way of limiting that chance and just sort of allow, so I don't know, I think what landed on the agenda for tonight isn't quite what all, you know, needed to come before the board. I don't know how much of it really needed to come before the board, especially things like, we're going to be in coolers. That's for the committee.
We were supposed to have another meeting last week when the snowstorm.
Right.
Quote-unquote, this quote-unquote "snowstorm." Didn't come.
Right.
But it was canceled. So we were hoping to be more prepared for this meeting than we are with a formal recommendation for you guys.
But I think the general follow-up is, you know, allowing the openness for businesses within the square during the week. We've got plenty of follow-ups as far as security, the gateways, all that kind of stuff that we've been working on, banning coolers as part of a security measure, and just, you know, making this more open for any business who wants to come. That said, I do think it's worth sending out a survey to the businesses that have participated in the past and make sure that this is something that works for the majority. I know that I've spoken to a handful besides you guys, and for the majority of those, they are very interested in this. But it would be nice to have data to go along with chatting at the bar on a Friday night.
Right. And I think to your point there with the compromise, you know, we also discussed during that meeting, you know, pricing for food items and that type of stuff. So we're very sensitive, too, to what the local community wants, and we're willing to work with that as well.
Yep.
Recognizing that, you know, there can be varying price points. Hey, there's always entry-level items for, you know, inexpensive amounts, but there are people that are out there that do want more expensive wine bottles. And, you know, we get those complaints. Why aren't you selling this wine this time? You did it last time. You know, so we think there has to be a varying degree of compromise, whatever that looks like. We think it's very plausible, you know?
And I think it's a great place to be. It means we've evolved, and we've gotten bigger as a town, and this all needs to evolve with it. So.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's time.
It's a great problem to have.
Yep.
You know? So I think that covers most of what we wanted to bring up.
Can you say your name into the microphone, too, please? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. Joe Condo, Diamond Gyms. One of the things that I wanted to speak about, which I think the events are great, and I think they can be better, and I think we're working forward to making it better as we are doing today. As far as signups, I know I talked with Catherine when I came on board, you know, we already had a signup sheet. You know, you signed up, you picked your days. So whether that was first come, first served, whether that may be a lottery, there was, you know, you did food on one day, the other time you do alcohol or beverages. So having, what we're proposing as a group of the few that are here, is having that area available so logistically, we don't have to say, people on this side of the street would have to go across and load, and unload our gear over there, set up shop, and then unload and load it back up to bring it back. If we're able to say, in front of, I'm just speaking for myself, on this side of the street with Colin, you know, we have to go all the way across the street, and logistically, it's a little tough. If we were able to, I mean, obviously, we have patios, which are great, but to set something up in front of our business, and we can do food and alcohol as well, would be beneficial. And then also have Colindo's, Aliano's, River Street can move in, D.C. Cops can come into that area, and then we'd have more of a variety instead of two food vendors, two alcohol vendors.
Yep.
This way, it's just a variety, I think would be best for the public as well as for the patron, I'm sorry, the business owners in the area as well. The open carry and things like that, I know we're going to discuss at a later point, but I'm talking about for the signups for the events themselves, I think we should open it up to everybody in the square, and then having it designated, you know, in front of your location would be a lot easier that way, instead of having it in one corner and then the festivities in another corner. That is, that is what I really, I thought was the point of this particular topic. You're on that before we get into anything else?
Yeah. So instead of signing up
Yeah.
On a first come, first served, and limiting it to the first come, first served people, and if it balances out properly, right, as it was before, instead, it would almost be like, we are participating on this day in front of our establishments, or if it is a Rosies or a River Street, we are participating on this day, and we'll have tents. And it's...
Yes, exactly. It'll cut down, obviously, the people on the square. We won't need, we won't need a tent, we won't need tables. We'd supply all that stuff, like, right in front.
Well, you would still have to be set up within the event. So there would still be a kind of a setup, I would say.
Yes, but I would say we wouldn't need your tents. If you want to donate them, we'll take them. But I'm just saying, logistically, for us, it'd just be easier.
You need, like, a table.
I could go five feet out of the patio and have the sidewalk in that little area I have. It'd be perfect area for that.
Yep. I think we can determine a lot of the logistics of exactly what this will look like, for sure.
And then not limit it to one does food, one does liquor. We can do both.
Right.
Is what I think would be most beneficial for us, being, you know, looking for our interests.
Absolutely. And I think we can limit what that looks like. You know, it's not 10 items of food in all, in the bar.
Of course. Again, that's still a pain, as it is.
For sure.
That's all I had on that subject. Thank you.
The open carry and things like that, I know we're going to discuss at a later point, but I'm talking about for the signups for the events themselves, I think we should open it up to everybody in the square and then having it designated, you know, in front of your location would be a lot easier that way. Instead of having it in one corner and then the festivities in another corner. That is, that is what I really, I thought was the point of this particular topic. You're on that before we get into anything else.
So instead of signing up as a, on a first come, first served and limiting it to the first come, first served people and if it balances out properly, right, as it was before, instead it would almost be like we are participating on this day in front of our establishments or if it is a Rosie's or a River Street, we are participating on this day and we'll have tents and, and it's...
Yes, exactly. It'll cut down, obviously the people on the square, we won't need, we won't need a tent, we won't need tables, we'd supply all that stuff like right in front.
Well, you would still have to be set up within the event, so there would still be a kind of a setup, I would say.
Yes, but I would say we wouldn't need your tents. If you want to donate them, we'll take them. But I'm just saying logically for us, it'd just be easier. I could go five feet out of the patio and have the sidewalk in that little area I have would be perfect area for that.
I think we can determine a lot of the logistics of exactly what this will look like, for sure.
And then not limit it to one does food, one does liquor, we can do both, is, is what I think would be most beneficial for, for us being, you know, looking for our interests.
Absolutely, and I think we can limit what that looks like. You know, it's not 10 items of food and all.
Of course, again, that's still a pain as it is.
For sure.
That's all I had on that subject. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
How are you guys doing? The only thing that I have, just one like simple point is I think that obviously you guys realize that one of the most important things about the downtown is people picking and choosing. I have restaurants in different areas, just like a lot of people in here, and we pick and choose our restaurants. So for example, we're paying a premium to be in the downtown. If I was two miles to the right or say I was down by Plumbos Building, my rent would be drastically different. So I'm paying more for the premium of being downtown. So I think that there also has to be your understanding of that. For example, I have a building, obviously in West Dundee that I'm off the square and I'm in a building that everyone has always sank and not done well at, but my rent there is drastically cheaper than for me to be in downtown West Dundee. So I get a, yes, I want to open up to everyone to have the opportunity, but it also isn't fair for the restaurants that are in the basic community that are paying more for it. And then on top of that, now you're taking the downtown and you're blocking the town off, right? There's times where there's, you know, private parking coming up and we're blocking the roads and it's difficult to get into the restaurants. So I think it's one of those things where I get it and there's times where I'd love to move my building on a thirsty Thursday and move it down the street so that I could get additional business in or have my parking and do all those things. So I think that, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I would, I would hope that you guys would see that and understand that the businesses that are downtown are drastically affected by those days. And like I originally thought that it was going to be a gold mine. Now, yes, will it change if there's carry and there's people that they have to get alcohol and they have to get food from downtown? That'll drastically change stuff, but it also doesn't help when a business that might not be affected can bring their tent downtown and serve liquor, but then their parking lot's free. Where my parking lot's blocked and now I'm serving. So I think that's one of those things that we have to look at and at the end of the day, we're not going to make everyone happy. But we also pick and choose the locations that we have. We pay a specific rent, we pay a real estate tax, we pay different things to be in certain areas. We also gamble. For example, I'll speak, I know for sure these guys, but in the winter months, I'm really sorry, it's difficult. If I realized how difficult it was going to be in the town like today, it's a ghost town. I have three or four tables in there right now. If I walk the square right now, yeah, it's great on Friday and Saturday. Now in the summer, it's completely different. And that's what we, I think all of us invested in is knowing that if we have this downtown area, we have the bike path, we have people walking the neighborhood, we have people coming down the bike path, stopping into our businesses. Our summer months are where we make all our money. But the winter months, I think we're all, you know, grinding and stretching every dollar to make it even more. So I think that's the other side of it, to think about it where there's other places that have a full parking lot that might be on the outskirts or might be closer to a different area where they're getting a different draw, where our draw is the summertime. We need the wind down Wednesday, we need a thirsty Thursday to survive, continue to be successful. So I think, I want everyone to be a part of it, but there's a reason why I choose specific locations. Like if you look in Pingerie Grove, I have Pingerie Grove, the reason why I do it is because there's no other restaurants out there. You know, I'm fortunate to be there. You know, there's only, I think, eight liquor licenses within the community. So will I be nervous when more people come in? Completely. But for here, it's obviously a stable community, there's a lot of businesses around, there's not much more that you can add to it unless you go farther and farther away, but the biggest pull is despite that. I think it would be also a good conversation to look at that instead of bringing in other people. Because for example, if you bring in the Rosie's, you bring in, why can't Brianna's come here? Why can't Pharaoh's come in here?
They haven't participated before. We're talking about the people that have participated in the past.
No, but why can't they?
Yeah, they've been invited. They can.
No, they could, but if, for example, if you're opening the doors to alcohol and food being served every single wine, no Wednesday and thirsty Thursday, I'll jump in. I'll open a little taqueria down the street and open it and start, start serving liquor, right? And take advantage of the prime real estate that I'm spending down here, paying for. So I think it's, it's something to look at.
Now that everybody's witnessed an events committee meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else like to address the board? Okay, so, yeah, it, it is definitely a two-pronged discussion as we, we spoke of or was mentioned earlier, the one, the open carry is going to be something that Chief, you're going to have to weigh in on, I believe. And then as far as participation, I personally, I think it'll, it'll benefit all of our downtown restaurants if they're able to serve both food and liquor. It's easy enough to cordon off Barrington Avenue right at the corner of Joe's place, straight across to include Mockingbird and DC Cobb and put a fence on the other side, making one big area there all the way to Railroad. In the event that the town is going to continue to grow and develop further south, we could cordon that off all the way down to Hill. But, you know, I, so for me, I, I think it's a, it's a good idea if we're going to be doing this, you know, expansion of the participation.
Yeah, that's a good point that we hadn't actually brought up, closing Barrington was not on the...
It's easy enough to do, right?
Yeah, with the traffic direction, it might be a little tricky with closing off Meyer and River, but we can talk about it.
Definitely Railroad, we already cut off to a certain degree.
We do, we do.
You know, so...
So, and that's not going to be a big deal. And then, you know, as I say, further south as we begin to develop over the next few years, you know, we can expand the, the whole event concept all the way to Hill Street if we need to and probably will. So, and it, of course, addresses, you know, your issue of both Joe and AJ about crossing over from Meyer to River and it is, you know, a bit of an inconvenience. So we're going to continue to have this and actually now is the time to do it. Because if we're going to implement any of these changes for the upcoming season, you know, January, February is the time to be discussing what we're going to be doing.
We will, of course, reach out to you at the next event meeting.
Absolutely. We'll definitely keep you guys posted because we're going to need you to help guide it, so.
Is it already extending down to Hill? It's spelled out that way in here, but it sounds like we're not.
That was part of the conversation around open carry. What's in the packet is more along the lines of the possible maybe future of doing open carry as opposed to what we had discussed for, specifically for the events that we would like to implement for this event season.
Yeah. So and then the nature too of, you know, location of bands, a lot there that's right along River Street. And of course, development of, of the Dodo Line Lot, that's going to affect it as well, what ultimately happens there. So it's exciting, but it's, you know, we've got to manage it properly, so we'll certainly be looking into it. Does anybody have any other questions, comments? Okay, so we'll keep you guys posted then and we'll, we'll get, keep right on this one, so.
Just a comment that it sounds like a great idea that it's less work for our staff and less coordinating and less of a lottery. Still a lot less work, more options for residents and ideally what the businesses want, so.
And it's easy enough too for a restaurant, if they choose for whatever reason not to participate in one of the events, they can easily, you know, get in and out much easier than if, if there were some regimented scheduling associated with it.
So as far as the things that aren't just going to, we won't, outside of what will happen at the next event meeting when we continue the discussions, can we start working on the survey for the businesses, please, and get that out soon?
We'll try to get that out by the end of the week.
Perfect.
And have something to discuss soon at the events committee.
Awesome, thank you. Hopefully the events committee maybe will be next week. We're trying to get schedules like that.
Okay, we have two other discussion items, but I'm just thinking maybe we could just start out with item B and go B, C, and D for these motion items and then go back to the discussion items. So if I could have a motion for item B?
Make the motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator entering into an engineering services agreement with Gerald L. Heinz and associate for the Lions Park Stormwater Detention Project.
Second.
Okay, so Joe, okay, gentlemen, thank you. Question for you. Did we, are we getting any state or county money that'll be associated with this? Because I know it was...
We did not receive any grant money last time around. Typically, there's an annual application, but there's some uncertainty with FEMA and grants.
Okay, but for that detention dwell that we put in, in the North Gate Manor, we got, we got help with that, didn't we, the first one?
Which, which side of the street are you?
North.
On the north side. Yes, phase one engineering.
That was the first phase. And then we had that huge flood, or not flood, but well, I guess it was a flood. Basically, it was a huge rainstorm that tested it. And I remember it just barely bringing over and then it went, gone in an hour. So we had a really successful test of that whole system and it worked great, but we did get public monies for that, didn't we?
For the first phase.
Yeah. And we're not going to get anything for the second?
Not so far.
Okay.
How, how long have we been applying for it?
Many years.
Many years? 10 years?
Kind of thinking we'd be, that we'd get this on around because it was a two-phase project with FEMA and we got phase one money for that. So usually you get phase two if they fund phase one, but we weren't accepted.
Is that something that we have to reapply for as phase two? I mean, since it's been so long between phase one and now?
No, we, I don't know if you remember, Kent County didn't have their hazard mitigation plan finalized and that was one of the requirements for the grant. So they kicked us out for not having that information. But it has been finalized since then and the village has adopted the hazard mitigation plan. So we would be eligible if the program stays the same and if grant monies are...
Do we need to let them know about that, you know, compliance?
We would if they opened up a grant process.
How far into the future would we be able to take advantage of one after the project would be completed? I mean, can we go back and retroactively seek?
No, typically it's front funding, they don't back funding.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I, you know, what I, I guess what I want to make sure is that, you know, whatever solutions we're coming up with for this address more than just the actual flooding that exists, you know, at this location. Because I was there last week and there's actually coming from the east, which is Howard, there's water coming from that direction as well, creating actually like a ravine, like a wash that's on the side of the mountain, you know, that's in, in the property owner's lawn. And I don't know if that's, I mean, that's going to keep happening even if we come with a drainage system at the bottom of that hill. You know what I mean? Like how do we divert the water from coming across, you know, from other areas?
Sure, so part of that proposal would include diverting water from Park and Howard to Lions Park into an infiltration trench. So we would cut off flow that goes down that storm sewer to the bottom part of Went and Howard. And that's the lower area, the basin area that overflows and goes back to the park.
And do we, your question then, any water being diverted from the east, don't we have a stand pipe along the backyards of Crestwood, which is the, the, just east of Howard, that backs up Howard basically in the terrace? So I mean, if, if that were to be insufficient?
You said stand pipe?
Yeah, just a, a, kind of like what we have right in between Ruppnecks and Scott, right on, on Howard across the street from...
Drywell?
A drywell.
Basically, yeah, it's dry.
Yeah, so the, the whole terrace area is serviced with drywells that we try to infiltrate before it gets to the low area, but over time those become more inefficient.
Yeah. So that's what I'm kind of wondering, if we would need to expand that, any one of those ones that we know are overtaxed, because they don't all get used the same, to the same capacity or level.
There's a small storm sewer system along the park and there's two drywells on Crestwood that flow towards Park and over Howard and into Lions Park.
And that's what we would be diverting with this?
Right. Not the, not the storm water on Howard, but coming off the park, so before it gets to there.
So we no longer have rivers through people's yards?
Smaller rivers, maybe. I'd have to look at the calculations.
That corner of the, of the park is the lowest point on the triangle, isn't it?
And it's a map floodplain, that's why.
Well, which, if it is, I mean, it seems like FEMA money would be available for it, you know, I mean, they're the ones drawing the maps telling us that it's, you know, a problem, you know, help us out, so.
Because the thought occurred that maybe we could create a underground duct to go from that park to the retention pond that is south of that location to, to let water go, you know, into there.
Right, we'll, we'll look into a possible overflow. We don't want to divert all the water to that area because we don't want that area to be inundated and then also get reduced infiltrations over time because of the extra water going to it. But we can certainly have that as a overflow point where, you know, it gets up to a certain level before it reaches the yards that it'll flow over towards.
And with some of our storms that we had, have we seen water that collects at the southwest, or I'm sorry, southeast corner of the park there where that retention dwell just to the south of it in North Gate Manor doesn't collect anything? I mean, if so, then what Scott is suggesting is, it makes sense that it's overflowing, you know, even though we don't want to, you know, overtax that, we can understand. But if, if we get a situation where there's never any water in it, but there is across the street, we just go underneath and...
Yeah, ideally we get away from any need for Public Works to show up and pump anything.
Yes, that would be fantastic.
Well, and at Madison there, that little inlet right off of Went, we used to have, you know, traditionally every time it rained, we had a flooding there.
The subsurface of that general area does accept the stormwater fairly well in this, this subject area of Lions Park during the non-frozen ground seasons, spring, summer, fall. Last year, for example, we did not respond to any type of flooding here at all, is my mouth, is my recollection. Prior year or two or three, perhaps we were out there on occasion, but the system or systems that are in place have been taken. That doesn't mean it will go forward, certainly. High intensity rain events, significant rain events could experience flooding into, onto further onto private property.
Well, that channeling that we, that you guys did right off of Madison helped quite a bit. So is, is there anything that you're waiting on the village for as far as help or permission or guidance or anything? So what about the Park District? They're going to give us access to the property, but are they going to, would they help at all financially?
I don't think they're going to help financially. What they did was grant the village an easement to put this project on their property.
Okay.
And that was done back in 2013.
Right, because essentially they're getting benefit from it. You know, I mean, I don't want to, you know, be tight-fisted about it, but it is Park District property, it is being flooded every time it rains. You know, here we are going to service the problem and eliminate it and it's certainly going to improve, you know, that asset for the Park District, but...
That's why there's flooding for our residents.
Right, right, absolutely. Because there's the, the few that border it that have to take the brunt of it, which we of course have, you know, priority attention for, but I'm just trying to figure out, because we're talking a lot of money to do this, so, you know, I mean, anything is going to help, so. All right, okay.
Just a reminder that engineering would be for this year and pleasure for construction in 2026.
Well, I thought that, we thought that major we could move that up to later this year, possibly, if we can get the engineering...
Construction?
Yes.
Joe, I talked in that...
Possible.
It's possible.
Yeah, and actually you probably don't want construction to happen. You don't want construction to happen during the summer because it's a park, I would assume, so ideally it would be late fall or...
I don't think that park is really has a lot of people running around it, to be honest with you, at that location.
Yeah, just way north of the...
Like there's a lot of trees there.
There's going to be a lot of truck traffic though, coming along that side.
I will say, Phil, in the last meeting, I believe we done, we discussed temporary measures that we might be able to do, though not the final project for next year, something just process changes or staying ahead of the game when it comes to these... Though not the final project for next year, something, just process changes or staying ahead of the game when it comes to these kinds of big events that cause the flooding, so I'd love to hear more about that, even if it's not today.
And what we can look at is the overflow route and see if we could design a storm sewer to handle that in the short term.
Okay, yeah. Anything that can help prevent some of these issues short term this year would be great.
How long do you suppose the construction phase would take? You're talking about twenty twenty six, so, you know.
Probably.
When in that season would you say?
Four months.
Four months? Okay. Technically, I mean, it could be done all this year, right? I mean, is money the only thing holding us up?
Some permitting, but yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that's, uh, that's cool. This is a long time coming, actually. I remember the first phase and so.
Call the question?
Go ahead.
Trustee Mahoney?
Oh.
Yes. Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sauer.
Yes. It'll take us item C if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into a professional services agreement with Hitchcock Design Group to provide planning and design services for the Illinois Route seventy-two corridor study.
Second.
Hey, Erica, can you give us a rundown of what this includes? Because this is separate and apart from Triangle Park, uh, and the south end on Hager, or, yeah, Hager, that we spoke with Hitchcock about.
Yes, so I actually asked Phil to put together a brief slide presentation about this project because it's a long-term project, multifaceted, and really is going to help us envision what an improved corridor could look like. And a lot of the improvements are related to safety, so part of this conversation is spurred from the Hager redevelopment and how we could possibly contemplate a two-way coming in and out from river and a realignment of that intersection. This conversation also is going to revolve around pedestrian and bike safety along the path. So coordinating with Kane County and our partners with the forest preserve to potentially do, um, an underground tunnel under seventy-two or a pedestrian bridge over seventy-two. Like, we want this consultant to evaluate both options and tell us which one is the most realistic, most feasible and most cost-effective based on the different variables that are in play at this, this whole study area. So, Phil, I'll pass it to you to give us a brief overview, so we know what we're about to embark upon.
Sure, so this is, shows the perimeter of the study area, um, with a, with an emphasis on the seventy-two corridor, essentially between the Fox River and Van Buren Street. Um, this study will focus on the three intersections at Water Street, River Street and Van Buren. As Erica mentioned, they're going to take a look at the pedestrian crossing that has been discussed numerous times here in, in this forum. How to safely get pedestrians and cyclists to cross seventy-two at River Street because of the offset, um, intersection there, so they're going to take a look at that. Certainly, we've demolished the two homes at two and four North Van Buren. So is there an opportunity, and the retaining wall there is now gone, so is there an opportunity to reconfigure some or all of that intersection? Of course, we have the school and the church on the south side. Um, we're going to take a look at Water Street. Of course, there's sight, sightline visibility issues for vehicles at that intersection and pedestrians. We're also going to take a look at other redevelopment opportunities along that seventy-two, seventy-two corridor. So there's businesses on both the north and the south side of seventy-two. This redevelopment concept plan will include some color graphic renderings of some possibilities for the seventy-two corridor. They'll look at, they're not going to do a formal engineering study per se, but they will look at, uh, ways to enhance, enhance and improve the flow of vehicles into those intersections and along seventy-two. Of course, anything that would ultimately happen would involve IDOT and perhaps the county and so on and so forth. And, um, also recognizing that this study is the first step, it's initiating it, this, this planning process that could take years of coordinating and coordination and planning and, and so on. Also looking at signalization of those three intersections, um, road widening, turning lanes, improving sightlines and so on and so forth. We did let Hitchcock, or I let Hitchcock know that, uh, we are pursuing a redevelopment agreement for the Hager property. So they also, as you may recall, were involved in our Riverfront Master Plan, but they also are aware of what's, concepts for Hager, Hager property. So the idea is to kind of tie all of this together into one comprehensive plan, so, um, so with your approval, we'll turn Hitchcock loose and, um, see what they come up with and with their team over the coming months. And as I mentioned, they'll come back with a plan which will include some renderings and some concepts and.
Are we providing guidance to them as far as what we're thinking, or are we just turning them loose and seeing what they like to come up with?
Go ahead.
Sure. So, yes, we are giving them some direction and then we also want to have some community input onto this process, so one, one of the aspects of the proposal is that they will do sort of like an open house to get, gather feedback. But again, like, what I, what I really want to stress is, we understand many of the issues related to the corridor and we understand there's many solutions to those issues, so what we need to do is figure out what our options are and then try to find, um, co, coalesce around one of those options. But all of these things take a lot of time and a lot of money, which, as soon as we start the process, we're then going to set ourselves up to be able to apply for funding down the road, once we have a feasible plan in place that everybody is, been, you know, a part of creating. So it's very exciting because there's a lot we know that we can improve upon. It's also daunting because of the gigantic nature of the scope. But, you know, we're, we're going to plant the tree today so that somebody else can sit under it years from now. But, you know, this is all super exciting and long overdue, so.
And some of these points on the slide here do speak to Hitchcock's approach and the, as we learned during the Riverfront Master Plan, they're very structured in their approach to developing a, any type of corridor or a study or a plan. And as Erica mentioned, they will be conducting an open house. That's something we had asked to be included in this process. Stakeholder input, um, which they, as you may recall, they did during the Riverfront Master Plan. So we're confident that we will, at the conclusion and working with them throughout the process, they'll generate some concepts and potential products that the village will hopefully embrace.
Yeah, it seems to me that, you know, and this is way down the road, a detail hardly worth mentioning, but the idea of a tunnel, I think, certainly outweighs the benefit of a bridge, so, simply because from a maintenance standpoint, the bridge is going to have to be maintained, whereas a tunnel would be far less, you know, daunting that way. Also too, traffic, just, you know, and somebody hits the, the pylon or whatever that supports the bridge, you know, a truck or something like that, now you got other problems that you wouldn't have otherwise, but, uh, and that stakeholder input, of course, also then would include area businesses, obviously.
Yes, yes, for sure.
They're going to be affected, so.
We also look at pedestrian safety, not only crossing seventy-two but along seventy-two. Most of those businesses are
Absolutely.
in very close proximity to the curb and.
Very.
A couple of years after I came to East Dundee, there was one street light, I believe it was in front of River Lee's and it, it was right between the building and the curb and it, it created a, a minimal distance. You couldn't get a stroller, for example. They had to go onto seventy-two and go around, so we actually removed that street light altogether. So there used to be a street light there, but.
I remember that street light.
Yeah, we had to take it out altogether just to create a, an accessible space for pedestrians along the south side of, of seventy-two.
Great.
All right, well, we'll, you go on to the, uh, the motion. We have a motion and a second, so, um, any other questions, comments? Kathy?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item D if we could have a motion.
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into an engineering services agreement with Christopher B. Burke, L T V, for Third Street Parking, Third Street Green Space and Water Street Parking Projects.
Second.
Okay, questions? Is this something then that we need a specialized engineer for rather than our in-house engineering? Talking traffic studies, we're talking parking, just seems like, do we need outside help that we aren't able to get in-house?
I believe we do. Um, Christopher Burke Engineering, they're a, a large, well-respected firm. They do have a wealth, a depth, the resources and staff expertise that, um, would be useful in this project. And certainly, I think, one important point is the aggressive schedule and accelerated pace of this project. We're looking to can, design and construct both of these in this coming construction season. And with the scope of projects that we have on our village plate this year, I do believe and recommend that we seek consultant assistance and we've, um, had some experience with Christopher Burke Engineering and, as I mentioned, they have a, a staff and a, a team that can provide some assistance for us in, in this project.
I mean, not only that, but our on-staff engineer is not doing the other item that we just hired them at, you know, any less of a rate, I think, than what we're paying these guys. So I don't know what that would save us to use them, I guess, other than maybe overloading him with too much work.
Do we have an idea, uh, from a downer's standpoint, what we're likely to see as far as this project?
As far as construction?
Yeah.
At this point, I, I do not. Um, if you're, if you'd like, I can go through some of the details of each of these two, the two components of this project, one being Third Street and the other being Water Street. Happy to do that, but they are, we're looking at, on Third Street, um, a couple of options, whether it be permeable pavers or asphalt product along Third Street. And along Water Street, certainly, we're trying to tie the park with the river and, and create a concept that maintains a flow of traffic around the park, around Triangle Park or Bartles Park, from Water to Barrington on the north end and Water to Second, and then up to Barrington from the south, um, creating additional parking.
Well, I'm just, just concerned, you know, as we're going to go ahead and approve the idea of entering into a services agreement, does that put us on the hook or, you know, what sort of latitude do we have to get out of it in the event that the cost is just a little too steep, you know?
Part of the process, they will generate a, an engineer's cost estimate for each, for the construction phase, for each, each component of the project and, and certainly something that we can contemplate at that point in time.
This is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, this is strictly a design, um, engineering contract. It has nothing to do with.
Construction, no. There's no construction or construction engineering associated with this project.
No, but the design has everything to do with money, or I should say, the money, the cost has everything to do with the ultimate design of what we're going to do, so. You know, I mean, we just have to keep that in mind.
So, um, did I read correctly or did I, do, am I understanding correctly that, um, originally we were going to stagger out the design engineering phases over several years, but decided to pull them all into this year and then hold off doing the police station parking lot construction to help pay for, you know, move that money into this year that was originally scheduled for.
Phil, you can expound on why we moved things around, because the, that originally, there are, there were, the last component, actually, there was two other components to this larger project. One was the re, resurfacing of the existing village hall parking lot and then the creation of a new parking lot next to the police station and, which is various challenges with those and the plate getting full and.
Right.
Different things, so.
So we had proposed, we, we've kicked around, there've been a number of variations of this.
Yeah.
We, so, the, the, the Water Street phase, the Kane County Fab Fox project, that is the paddlecraft. Their contractor, um, the county bid the project last year, they were awarded, and it's my understanding the contractor is scheduled and on target to construct this year.
Okay.
So we had attempted to apply for OSLAD grant funds to, um, make some improvements within Bartles Park and to create essentially this Water Street parking area, um, converting it to a two-way to a one-way northbound, essentially, parking space, not a, a one-way road. And that would tie everything into the, the new Fab Fox paddlecraft launch project. It's my understanding we were unsuccessful in that OSLAD grant venture. So we, recognizing that Kane County wants to, or will be pursuing their project this year, we recognize the need that to fully utilize that, we need to create some type of a parking scenario for anyone wanting to use the paddlecraft launch. And as you've seen, one of our talking items later in this discussion tonight will be the kayak, um, kiosk. So we can certainly talk about that at point. So the idea, I, I don't know if the paddlecraft will be installed, followed by the Water Street parking and then somewhere in there, the, the kayak kiosk, um, installation. Don't think that it'll all be ready for full use in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's, because of all the phases, they're going to have to kind of work together and trying to keep contractors from stepping over each other and trying not to put too many cooks in the kitchen at the same time.
Sure.
It'll have to be kind of a phased project, but I, I, I think it would be ambitious to think that we'll, it'll be a full kayaking, canoeing opportunity, utilizing everything, parking all, all this year. So we're going to do what we can, certainly to be ready for it in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So that's, oh, go ahead, sir.
Oh, I, I thought you were done if you got another sentence.
No, 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 go, go ahead.
I just want to, you know, you mentioned this grant that we didn't get. Just want to, or I guess remind everyone, when we got, when we gave Hitchcock the contract for the design of the Riverfront Plan, one of their selling points was that they have a ninety-seven percent success rate in applying for grants. So I think maybe what we should do at some point is ask them to apply for some grants for us.
Absolutely.
So we did not use Hitchcock for this OSLAD grant opportunity and the reason why, or reason being is Kane County hired a, a firm to represent or to, to essentially design the Fab Fox project for them. Uh, the firm was Hay and Associates. So Hay and Associates is working with the other four, so there's five projects total with the Kane County project. So East Dundee, Carpentersville, three communities further to the south, Montgomery, Potavia, and I think South Elgin. We felt that they had experience in OSLAD grant.
Yeah.
OSLAD grants, so we just thought.
But we have other phases to our Riverfront Plan.
Yes, for sure.
We should.
Definitely we'll be using them to apply for the OSLAD grant.
We will, absolutely.
Okay, awesome.
Yes.
All right.
What, do we know where the other Fab Fox location is in Carpentersville?
So there, yes, so in Carpentersville, it's exactly point six miles north, north of where our paddlecraft launch will go in. So it's in their newly redeveloped park. I don't recall the name of it, but it's essentially where the Fox River Trail crosses Washington.
Yeah.
So that, that.
Okay.
Area right there along the river, that'll be where their paddlecraft launch will be.
So just like south of Main Street bicycles?
Yes, yes.
A bit.
So are you saying that they're, well, maybe we'll talk about this when we get to that point, that they're also going to have one of these rental machines there?
So Caleb set up a meeting with Carpentersville just a week or two back and so we met with, see if Carpenter'sville's contact with, with their project. She did provide a schematic, a rendering of what they're proposing for their park. She did say that they're, will eventually get to that point, but we're moving a little bit faster than they are, so. Um, I would imagine at some point they do have a desire to.
Okay.
To pursue that.
I will also say.
I will also say that with the river and the current, and this is, I know, for a topic that is not currently in front of us, but with the river's current state, this side of the pedestrian bridge and the other side of the pedestrian bridge may be different with the depth of the water and things like that, so it might actually benefit us to have one a little bit further down on the other side of the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get that, but I do wonder if maybe, you know, the Hager Park would be a better spot, given, you know, a little bit more distance between them, but, I mean, that's obviously not something we have to talk about.
So tempting to talk about all the way down.
Unrelated, did Carpenter'sville happen to mention whether or not Park District was gonna retain control or operation of that park, just north of us?
They did not mention, to my recollection, no.
Okay, because they currently do Bartles Park for us. I mean, technically, East Dundee owns it, but the Park District has it on their books as an asset where they control or operate it.
Operate, maintain it. We have an intergovernmental agreement with them, yes.
Right, which I would be all for, if we're gonna set something up and then let another governmental unit, you know, keep it up.
And as a reminder, this scope does not include any improvements within the park itself, so the park itself will remain as is until we move in a direction at some point to make improvements to it in the park.
Which, potentially, at that point, we could ask for another OSLAD grant, for that portion of it.
Yes. Now, the OSLAD grant application that was submitted last year did contemplate improvements in the park.
Right, but balance of improvements.
Correct.
If there were no other use, then just the fencing alone would be an improvement, so...
Okay, anybody else, any questions, comments, no? Phil, appreciate your time. All right. Yeah, let's now move on to...
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's not a discussion, okay. Catherine?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coontz?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Driver?
Yes.
And Trusty Sodder?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna go to item A then, which is Gateway Way Finding Signage Design Discussion, and we have the contact for that.
Thank you, you were supposed to be first.
Thank you.
I'm not here to let you know that I just successfully applied for OSLAD, Fox River Grove. There you go. Time well spent.
Awesome.
Well, it's good to be back here before the board this evening. I think that we took your comments, along with staff's input, and really, kind of together, came together and created a really nice product, I think, I hope you agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We really kind of focused on the black and white logo, integrated, historic downtown and with the East Dundee signia, and when you get into the detail, I'm not sure if I can... When you get into the detail of the arch here, you can start to see these little, almost railheads that give some relation to the railroad in the design. When we go back to the wayfinding sign, we've integrated the logo at the base, verified the sizing, and it's going to really help pop the downtown, I think, and we're really here just to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you guys and answer any questions you have.
Not a question, but a comment, that Burke looks awesome.
It does.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's been an awesome project.
Yeah, I love it.
I love the rounded gateway, the, yeah, the gateway ground mount with the, yes.
Yeah.
I love that.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I love the mix of the black steel railroad material, plus some Hager bricks or common bricks, really pulled together a lot of unique characteristics in the town.
Yeah. The only one thing I'd like to see on the LED message board sign, I love how the Gateway Post Mount sign has your little wave at the top, and then it's straight at the bottom. When it comes over to the LED message board sign, I feel like there's still too much blue, and I'd like to see East Dundee bigger, so my suggestion as a possible solution would be to take that lower black section below the LED sign and have it just go straight across, and then do East Dundee all in one line, to make that a little bit bigger, and have a little less blue, and then we also get away from that kind of waviness that you guys kind of...
If I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're talking about coming...
Yep.
Kind of straight across here.
And then put East Dundee bigger all in one line.
Get that a little bit larger.
Yeah.
Those are pretty big letters, just so you understand, I mean, six inches are pretty, pretty sizable, but they can certainly go a little bit larger if desired.
And I do like the idea of striking it across the bottom instead of, that's, that's...
The wave.
You know.
I agree.
Love it.
You guys did a great job. I know there was a lot of stuff thrown at you.
Right.
Now, you guys don't make these, do you, you're strictly designed?
We, correct, we're a design firm, we do partner with a sign company, several sign companies, but we have one that does this type of work, and we've been talking with throughout the process.
That's all the feedback I have.
Yeah.
So the, the Gateway signs, and we're talking like, what, up near Commonwealth, along 72 to the east, and then where, where in the west, I mean, as far as location goes...
If you go further down in the package...
One on Water Street.
It shows all the pictures of all the locations.
That's on the top left, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's for people at home, for their benefit more than...
They can't see it on the screen?
So... So we got Water Street, we got 72, and then it's 68. Okay.
And what's nice about the package is you've got kind of some options, so if you, depending on the specific situation, where, like on Elgin Avenue there, you might be a little bit close to the roadway, you can select, you know, one design versus another, there's different options that you could get into in terms of what you want to place at each specific location.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, then we have one last item, which is the self-serve kayaking program discussion, which we actually touched a little bit on. So is this specific to Bartles Park? It is?
Well, yes, we're around Bartles Park.
Yeah, Scott's point to maybe bringing it further south actually is a good one, because if Carpenter'sville's gonna do the same thing, you know, having two real close together may not make a whole lot of sense, or we're making more benefit out of it, spreading it out, so...
I mean, maybe these guys would be interested in moving it at some point.
Yes, yeah, because Hager's gonna be a long way out.
Yeah.
Well, if I can add one thing, and this is something that Carpenter'sville shared with Caleb and I when we met with them, they did provide a rendering of what they're planning for their park.
Oh.
And their parking is on the east side of Washington, so it...
Really?
Yeah, there are, it's my rec, and it could certainly change, so their parking lot is on, as I recall, is that correct, it's all on the east side of Washington?
It's in the west.
Yeah, so in our case, our Water Street improvement is much closer to the river, and more accessible, in my opinion, than theirs could be. Now, where the kayak kiosk could ultimately go, that's, you know, if you brought your own kayak, I think, you know, certainly our situation will be a little more efficient for somebody who brings their own kayak.
And the rendering of the Carpenter'sville park, it does not have a space for this currently, that doesn't mean they couldn't add it down the road, but when I've looked at it, it doesn't appear that there's a good spot for it. And their park is a multi-use park, it's not just for paddlecrafts, where ours will be very much targeted towards that. There, they have a beer garden, they have all these other, like, activities that are gonna be going on, and they're gonna have, you know, food and music, and so it's gonna be more multipurpose, whereas ours is gonna be very focused on being a launch site, so... But this is a unique opportunity, you know, we weren't sort of seeking this out, but understood that it could be a good addition.
Yeah.
Since we're working upon this process with the county to put in this launch, and, you know, we thought it was worth bringing it to the board to discuss if you might want to move forward with it, because it will bring an opportunity for people to utilize the river who may not have that opportunity, because they don't own their own craft. It's interesting that we get to share in the revenue stream, so that we can potentially recoup our investment, and I do think they're flexible if we ever wanted to relocate it, but it does require just some power to the site, right? Or is it all battery? Sorry?
No, sure. Caleb, do the light there.
I, that has not come up in conversations, but I believe there is no power.
It's all solar-powered panels, or whatever, usually is what they do. That's awesome.
Look, from the video that was included, it looked like the power is supplied by you, because you scanned the code with your phone, and then it has all the instructions on your phone rather than some sort of display, so...
Right, right.
Triggers a lock.
Yeah, there's a lock trigger.
Oh, it's a battery-powered Bluetooth lock. There you go.
Okay, so yeah, no power probably required to the site. So if the board has interest in us pursuing this, you know, we will figure out how to make it happen.
Hundred percent, yeah, that's great.
I think it's pretty cool, and I really like that they, this company seems to take all the responsibility.
Totally.
I do wonder about liabilities, you know, if somebody was to rent one of their kayaks and go out and have a problem, you know, where does that liability fall with that company, I would think?
There's a whole, there's a whole, just like with Dibby Bikes, there's a whole waiver that you have to sign in order to even rent it. I watched the whole video on how it works, and so...
We have tortoise.
Yeah.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, it's an impressive, it's an impressive system.
Yeah.
Can I ask where this would go?
Awesome.
So it would go in the, near the paddlecraft launch.
Okay.
So, do you want to blow up the map, Phil?
Sorry, was there one, and I just missed it? No. No. But it would have been part of the, the engineering agreement for Christopher Burke.
Actually, what I was gonna do is bring up the...
It would be, if you've got the whole packet, it's page, like, 145 of the packet, or so.
Yeah, here we go, here we go.
Yeah, it's not really on here.
Ah, thank you. So where do you see this coming?
Probably makes sense to have it somewhere in close proximity to the boat launch.
Yeah, I just didn't have a good vision of what that would mean with the current proposal.
Yeah, so what we would do is work with the vendor to have them come out and evaluate the site.
Okay.
And then have them review this proposal, and then have them give us their suggestion of where they think the ground is most suitable.
Cool.
And that accessibility is the best.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do have this set up as kind of an accessible way to the river, so I want to make sure we're not kind of blocking it or making it...
Right, right.
Less conducive for people. Yeah, and that was one of the things that was the benefit about doing this parking project this year, is that this is going to be an 80 acceptable launch site, but if you're needing that, you're not gonna be able to park anywhere near it, unless you do this portion of it. Carpenter'sville one will have like a little drop-off area, like a little circle drive, but then you have to go and then park across the street, so...
Thank you for... With boat launches, even like the, the park, forget the name of the park, okay, Carpenter'sville, above the dam, above what, where the dam used to be. Put your boat in the water, your bed boat up.
I think it's literally called the Boat Launch.
Yes, okay.
So we, if, there's, it seems like there's consensus to proceed with this, we would probably coordinate it so that it wasn't installed until after this improvement was completed.
Absolutely.
So we have some time to figure out all the logistics.
Cool.
Very exciting.
Yeah, and the eight slot is what you were recommending, it sounds like a good reasonable spot to start.
I like that it gives a variety. It's, it's for single person, but then...
Eight slots.
Two, you know, two paddleboards. I like, I like that, you know, possibility of having paddleboards and the, well, the tandem kayaks.
Yeah.
That was fun.
Good for families.
And they have wheels, so you can drag them pretty easily in the video, so it seemed pretty, even if it has to be on the side of the drive, it doesn't seem too bad.
They are heavy, they are way heavier than you think they are.
Well, I found like a full block.
Yes.
And that gets very tiring, but yeah, that's much better.
I mean, you know, like, we like to invite people over, but we might not have enough to accommodate, even with, you know, big borrowers stealing from friends and neighbors.
Yep.
As you can see on kind of the north end there, as far as says picnic table pad, you could probably generate, create something that, like, that a little bit closer to the actual launch access, so it would be a, a pad, so to speak, to accommodate this kiosk.
Good call.
Cool.
It's gonna be good.
Good job. Who has this, who's this your idea?
No, I just wrote no.
All right. Give him some credit.
Caleb, whenever anybody asks you if it's your idea, you just say yes.
Yeah.
Actually, read the room first and then say yes.
Okay, then, we know where we're going with this, right? Any other questions, comments, no? All right, then it'll take us to a report, so Andy, why don't you start us off?
Go around the room. Um, yeah, the question came up from a resident about sidewalks along Route 25, like especially River Haven, and some sort of crossing, like a crosswalk, to get across from River Haven over to the, like the mini-mart over there. I know that three years ago, we brought this up, because somebody got hit trying to cross, because a lot of people cross 25 on foot, and it seemed like IDOT had some things that were slowing down, looking into that, but just wanted to check again to see if we could relook at that. And I didn't really ask about sidewalks before, so I was wondering, is that even something we're allowed to do, or would that be IDOT or somebody else, if we were to say 25 should have sidewalks on that side?
We're doing the bike and pedestrian plan this summer slash fall, and that would be how we could sort of prioritize the areas where we need sidewalks most, which, that's been identified, actually Sarah brought it up a little earlier today, too. So we understand there's a need for sidewalks throughout the community, but hopefully the plan will help us prioritize where those should go for second, third, and then also, once we have the plan in place, then we can apply for the grant funding, which is a little bit easier to get than FEMA grant funding, so...
Yeah.
I'm hopeful and optimistic that we'll start a multi-year approach to adding sidewalks, starting probably '26, '27, but this year, we are, are we still planning to do the one up by the library?
No, that would defer.
Okay, next year, sidewalk by the library. But yeah, sidewalks are minimal here, and need to be.
Yeah.
Especially as micro mobility continues to transform, people make, taking scooters and electric bikes, and like, we just need to make spaces for people to get around easier and more freely.
Well, we do have a head start on some power.
That's Santa Live.
Yeah, I know.
Can we, can we do anything about talking to D300 about putting it around Van Buren, along their property? It's... It's, it's crazy to me that they don't have it on Van Buren.
That was one side that said we looked at and extending the sidewalk to the west side of Van Buren.
Right.
Down closer to, well, essentially over the barriers and all the way up to, then adjacent to the middle school.
Yeah. But it is, it is school property.
Not, not all of it.
Well...
I mean, the amount that actually bonds the D three hundred from the parking lot that you pull out, I mean, it, it...
Our mountain extends fairly deep
To maybe the creek.
To the west of the curve.
Yeah.
Along the school.
Yeah.
When you concur around
Yeah.
we, you know, that all that area we can consider.
Right, okay.
Incorporate it then into our sidewalk.
Yes, Joe?
And that, that could qualify her for a state or a district school grant.
Oh, okay. Yeah, perfect.
Keep that in mind, thank you.
Yeah, walk, walking the dog. It's been a personal experience, if that's what it's called.
So part two, there were some neighbors that mentioned, so just like a public service announcement about lighting on your homes is if you have outdoor lighting, try to have it on a motion sensor if it's always on or have it pointed down instead of out. Because a few neighbors have mentioned having annoyance of another person's always on light shining on their house and looking at ours and like, oh yeah, we should make sure to shut these off. But like, it's off some people's radar and it's really high on other people's radar, so check your lighting.
There's a couple instances of that in the triangle by me that, there's one in particular, just like daylight, you know, it's like, good lord.
And there's, there's, there's also lights that'll like shine rather dimly and then they light up with mo, you know, brighter with motion control too. We've got that on our driveway as well, which is nice.
Some of us have neighbors who just buy the new lights if they don't like it.
Downfacing.
Nighttime replacements. And then last update, West Dundee is talking about sculptures tonight as well. I talked to Cheryl, their trustee, over the weekend. We gave a few more updates and ideas for the sculptures as we're still working through sketches and ideas, but kind of looped her in on that we're in early stages and they're going to talk about it tonight. So we should get more details from them and get sketches and further concepts coming back soon.
Cool.
That's all?
Rich?
Um, yes, so we had the black and white art show and it was a huge success and eight businesses participated when they had artwork hung. So thank you to Tequila Valves, Diamond Gems, Mockingbird, Black and Gray going around. East Side Cafe, Willow and Birch, and Aliano's and River Street Tavern all had artwork. And thank you Caleb for all your hard work helping us get that set. We cannot have done it without you, so you're, you're a rock star, you're on it. And then I have a question, is there any reason why we can't use the blacktop parking yet? It's, it's got the lines in it and it's still blocked off, especially for the parade coming up. But it, can we get a green light for that?
We, so the, the parking garage, uh, we're working on trying to get access to just that portion in time for the parade. Um, we just need to sort of accept it and that requires us to sign off.
Accept it and sign off on it exactly, so that's the goal. Okay, all right.
When did they tell us that the garage would be done as far as parking?
May? April?
It seems like they, you know, the exterior part has been ninety-nine percent done except for these fascias for so long.
Waiting for the corners, yeah.
Do we know what the status of these fascias are? Is it some sort of, is it coming from Italy?
Yeah, it took them a while to get a fabricator that could create this. And they finally sourced one who came and took a stencil of Diamond Gems. And now they're sending it out, I think it's out of state and it's not going to come until early to mid-March, so.
Okay.
It was hard sourcing one.
I, I like that they're doing their due diligence, going to the Diamond Gems and getting something. That's, that's cool.
Or just the two-twenty, the building in the middle of the town, just right down the street that council's supposed to, same design. Nick, Rich?
Well, I was going to have no report, but I figured now is as good as time of any. I'm going to be stepping back from my role as trustee, resigning as I am. Our brood is growing. We have two more kids on the way, which is pushing us to five. We've outgrown our house in East Dundee. My wife grew up on an eighty-eight acre farm up in Wisconsin and it was always her goal to have more land. So that's what we did, we got more land. And yeah, it's been an absolute dream of mine to be able to participate in the political realm. So I'm happy I got to cross that off my bucket list. It's been a great four years, almost four years here in East Dundee. I feel like I've grown up a lot in the last four years, being able to be in the room where it happens is Hamilton and Aaron Burr say in the screenplay and musical. But, you know, in terms of being able to raise my kids here, watch my, my first three grow up here and be able to be a part of the community and enjoy all that our wonderful community has to offer has been fantastic. So thank you to the board members, you know, for, you know, putting up with me and my stupid jokes for the last few years. And also to staff for being as phenomenal as you are to work with. And, you know, the community for putting your trust in me in this last election cycle. Sorry I couldn't see it through the next two years, but the house is just getting a little, a little too cramped. So I wish everybody the utmost amount of luck. I hope that the progress continues in terms of everything that we've put forward. And I will not be a ghost, I will be around. So I, there's no other place I plan to spend my money other than right here. So I guess, I guess I should tell you we're going to Algonquin, so I'm not very far away, so. But thank you again, thank you to my family for letting me do this, for spending all the time away, and that's it, so.
Is this your last meeting though?
No.
Likely going to be the last one, unless March third pops up, so that would be, that would be the last that I could be. But the announcement is in the atmosphere, so everybody knows.
Yeah.
So, but yes.
Just a walk.
Yes, a walk.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, I do, I do, I was looking at my old messages and I actually had a message from you about six years ago talking about how you wanted to get involved, and so here we are.
Here we are. What a, what a ride.
Scott?
Uh, I have nothing else, no report.
Okay, I've got nothing. Kathleen?
Thank you for arranging the shredding event again. That's on, going to be on May tenth for East Dundee residents. I was wondering how difficult it would be if we've looked at it lately on doing a recycle, electronics recycling event. We've done it in the past. We have attempted and collected electronics and driven down to good old Fabian Parkway, which is a long way away. And met the guy just as he was closing the gate and refused to open it for us. So it is, it is, it's, it's a long way.
What Dundee has as a location, you're open, you can...
And they'll take East Dundee stuff?
Hmm? As far as I know, I've, I've taken stuff.
Oh, you have? Okay. That's great.
It's over there by, right off of Bonkoski, it's in Thirty-one.
Okay.
It's in that area there.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
We'll look into it and if we can do it, we'll do it. If it's right down the street, we'll promote it and advertise it.
That's great.
So we call it West Dundee.
We went to one that Carpentersville had last summer.
Okay.
And they, it was like a mobile and they just showed up with a moving truck.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I had three TVs go out in two weeks, so I would love this event. Three TVs went out in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
This would be great.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I get, and West Dundee's also accepting the transponders, the iPass transponders that are being phased out for the stickers.
I gotta put that down.
I gotta get a sticker. Is that still only available at Jewel or is that?
Well, the sticker, I got it mailed to my home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, I just haven't put it on yet, but I just assumed everybody was going to do that, so. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Sarah?
On the chance that we do not have a meeting on March third, the St. Patty's Parade is a month from now. Can't forget that. And then Phil, really quickly, with the Third Street plans for the parking and everything, will the planting be part of that or is it just the actual engineering plan?
So the design of Third Street will, so the green space, yes, is, is part of the project. Although Caleb has been working with a number of, the Arts Council and a number of organizations with regards
You just answered my question.
The planting themselves.
Sorry, we have a biologist on the Arts Council and I wanted to make sure that she was involved.
She's very involved.
She has, she has a lot of interest in making sure we've got the right plants going in and things like that, so.
Yes, all the plants themselves. We're, the project will just design and construct the perimeter of the planting area.
Perfect, thank you. That's it.
That's it, okay. Would you, Sarah?
So our first bag yesterday. Oh. Oh. What? That wasn't clear. Okay, yes, so we, our firm every two years hosts a biennial seminar where we put on several presentations. I think every single person in the firm has some kind of role. So we invite you all to attend, both officials and, or elected officials and staff. It will be on
May eighth.
May eighth, and it'll start at around lunchtime and then we'll, it'll be downtown in the Loop at Maggiano's and then afterwards we'll have a happy hour at our new office, which we will be moved into by then.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
You should have received the email saying that you...
We did, I, I did. Cool, cool. Okay, uh, Joe, anything? No reporting. Phil? Chief?
Anne Kerricka, that's been at least.
I was just going to mention that right now it's possible we won't have that March third meeting because we don't have any agenda. As you can tell, we had a lot this evening. Yes, but if we don't have that, then we would like to recognize trustee Tribber for his service at a future meeting. So hopefully he'll come back.
I will.
We'll have to drag you back on a Monday.
Okay, so then that takes us to executive session, which I assume we're not going into.
We do have minutes.
Okay, so we are going to adjourn into executive session. Close to the public media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five ILCS one twenty slash two, C twenty-one, discussion of minutes.
A second.
It's wonderful.
And then we're going to, we're going to adjourn out of that, so. That is it.
Trustee Mahoney?
I'm sorry, can I also add C eleven pending litigation?
We can.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
And President Linum?
Yes. Can I let you thank everybody for coming out, breathing the cold, stay warm.
Can we have just a quick second?
And have a great night.
What?
With the group or how?
I'm not going to take long.
Okay.
I don't know. It all depends on what the answer is.
Yeah, they were working with Mary Kay Harvey on the Arts Council. Mostly she was telling us about it, but yeah.